I will call the city council meeting of Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 to order at 6 o'clock. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA subsection 403-A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 818-0036-1903 and password 845459, or via computer at the link provided on the StanfordMaine.org website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at WWStanfordMaine.org under email City Department, City Council. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the Moment of Silence, and I'm going to ask you all to mute your computers, and I turn this over to Deputy Mayor Hurlahy who will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight I'd like to dedicate our Moment of Silence. It's council reminding me this week, it's almost one week since Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief Cutter passed away. So much has happened in a year, it feels like a blink of an eye since we lost such a really wonderful man. He was just kind and personable. So tonight I'd like to dedicate, in his honor, the Moment of Silence to all the people who are working in nursing, who are doctors, who are in the hospital, and who are on the front line dealing with COVID as they've had a very exhausting year and they still have time left before hopefully the vaccinations start to do their job. But tonight I'd like to dedicate my Moment of Silence to them. Madam Mayor, you're muted.
I unclicked. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, we will start with the roll call. Counselor Martell?
Present.
Counselor Hanselman?
Present.
Counselor Tuttle?
Present.
Counselor Stackpole?
Present.
Counselor Lanigan? Deputy Mayor Hurlahy?
Present.
And I am Ann Marie Mistracchio, Mayor of the City of Sanford. We're joined this evening by Stephen Buck, the City Manager, and Larissa Ricketts, the Manager's Executive Assistant. I'm going to ask you all this evening to just try, if at all possible, as we go through the evening, to use your Hands Up function on your computers. Everyone is different. If, for some reason, I don't respond, I know that Larissa's keeping an eye on it, I try to see it, and let's just try this this evening because I'm trying to avoid more than one person talking at once because I think it's not as confusing for maybe for us, but maybe for the people that are watching. So, and I will try to do the same, it's really difficult, I know, it's on Zoom, but let's see what we can do. The first item on the agenda this evening are the minutes, 21-88-01. Order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, February 16th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Show movement, Madam Mayor.
That is a motion by Counselor Tuttle, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I will give it to Counselor Hanselman. Is there any discussion? If not, then I will call the roll. And I just want to say, the reason that I use the paper is I'm afraid I will miss someone. Doesn't sound simple, but Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlahy?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, and that is a unanimous vote. All right, Mayor's Report, City Council Subcommittee Reports. I am going to begin with my report, which is short, and it will be followed by a requested report from our State Representative Tuttle, who also, you know, also serves on the council, so I wanted to give him a chance if he had a legislative report to give, and then I will go on to Subcommittee Reports. So this morning I was able to participate in the opening of the Sanford Vaccination Center, located in a former Marshall store in the Center for Shopping, and I want to thank all the state, county, and local entities that made this center possible. And my personal thanks are to our local first responders, the Sanford Fire Department paramedics and EMTs, who will actually have been asked to help staff the site. I think that there will be at least five of them on a daily basis giving vaccinations, and I really appreciate the ability of our local paramedics, EMTs, to do that. And I also want to thank the many volunteers and local healthcare providers who will take to keep this up and running over the next six months. As a reminder to all councilors, if you have a personal City Council Facebook page, do not use the City of Sanford phone number as a contact number. If you choose to provide a number, it must be your own phone number. I am in the process of removing my mayor's page from Facebook. I have switched over my legislative page to a mayor's page. I've decided that if a citizen wants to contact me, I would prefer emails or phone calls. My cell and email address are on the Sanford website, StanfordMaine.org. And I'm going to now ask Counselor Tuttle to provide his legislative report before we go on to Subcommittee Report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Buck, Ann Marie Mistracchio, and members of the Sanford City Council and members of the public, this new legislative session looks quite different because of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. We were sworn in at the Augusta Civic Center on December 2nd, and it's really been quite a different session. A major part of our work this session is balancing the state budget for the next two years, and public hearings on this legislation are underway. One of my goals for this budget include making sure that our recovery from the economic fallout of the pandemic leaves nobody behind. I will also be pushing to make sure that the budget adequately addresses our schools, strengthens our healthcare system, provide help to local governments and property taxpayers, and continue our efforts to address the climate crisis. But before we get into that, the full legislature is going to meet once again at the Civic Center on March 10th and 11th to debate and vote on the first wave of bills to emerge from legislative committees. It is possible, but still uncertain at this point that the legislature might take up the governor's supplemental budget. But I imagine the legislature might also take up LD1, a bill by the Speaker and the President of the Senate that pertains to functions as COVID-19 Bill of Rights, which further insulates Maine people from bearing the cost of the pandemic. This year I am serving on the Veterans and Legal Affairs Committee, which oversees voting rights, veterans gambling alcohol, and actually marijuana this year, where I'm hoping that we can have some input in reimbursing our municipalities with some of the revenue. As a former Army medic, I always look forward to measures to help veterans. I'm also hoping to make some of the ways we made voting more accessible to people during the pandemic, something I feel very strongly about. I have put forward six bills this year. One measure I'm working on with City Mayor Buck could eventually lead to better workers' compensation laws. Other bills I've introduced improve state education aid, also funding for our Sanford Main Veterans Memorial Cemetery in Springvale. I'm also putting legislation in to reexamine taxing municipalities on solid waste. Also, I'm allowing legislation in to create a study committee to study the possibility of allowing teachers to collect special security like everybody else. I have another bill pertaining to Christine Pratt, who was the longtime Secretary and Director of the Maine Veterans Clinic in Springvale, to allow her to be buried at the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery, something that other states do. And I think it's well deserved, I think without Christine's effort, we probably wouldn't have a cemetery. And in closing, I'm committed to working with all my colleagues, regardless of party, to advocate for Sanford-Springvale and to move our state forward. If any council member, or the mayor, or the city manager, or the public require my assistance with a legislative matter, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. My email here at City Hall is JLtuttle@StanfordMaine.org, or you can call me directly at home, 324-5964. In the past, I had held weekly constituent hours, but because of the coronavirus issue, I had to suspend those. But, Madam Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Representative Tuttle, for that update. We'll start with the Subcommittee Reports. I'm going to ask first for the zoning Subcommittee Report. I think that would be Counselor Stackpole.
Yep. So, we had a couple of items on the, actually three items on the agenda last Tuesday. We spent a great deal of time discussing the solar project amendments to our zoning, to, I guess the best word would be to accommodate solar projects that is going to be located pretty much in the Sanford-Springvale area. I don't want to get too much into that. But essentially what we did is we looked at all our options, and I'm going to also add that in light of our desire as a city council to work more closely with the planning board, the planning board initially turned down the plan for this, but we're going to send it back to the planning board and have them take another look at it, and possibly kind of a more thorough look with more details, and we're hoping to bring them on board and to bring the zoning changes forward to the council. That'll be a couple of weeks away anyways, given what we're doing. Planning Board is meeting tomorrow night, I think they're going to discuss this, and then zoning again a week from today, so it wouldn't be till our next full meeting. We also just had a quick update on the discussion, the zoning Subcommittee meeting with the planning board. We've established some dates, and I think three dates, and once again, Planning Board is meeting tomorrow night, so I hope that after tomorrow night, we will have a firm date. And I think zoning committee members are aware of this, but I'll say to the general public, I think we were leaning towards what I call an off Tuesday night, a night that there isn't a city council meeting to meet with the zoning Subcommittee. That will be a public meeting, and of course, all councilors are welcome to attend, as well as the public. That's what I have for zoning.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Do you also have a report for the Solid Waste Committee?
Yes.
Why don't you go ahead with that one?
I want to point out that the third item on the agenda, going back to zoning just for a minute, the third item on the agenda, we ran out of time. There was no discussion at this meeting regarding retail marijuana, so that, you know, is going to be an ongoing issue that we're going to be discussing, and so we'll just roll that forward. For solid waste, the majority of the meeting was with a representative from Waste Zero discussing the quality of the orange trash bags that we use here in the city. The major point, I think, that I want to make, so this doesn't go on too long, is that when we bring forward the price adjustments for the bags, we're also going to have an item on the agenda discussing the trash bags in, I guess you would say, kind of proper use, do's and don'ts, those kinds of things, and provide a lot more specifics. Couple of points I'd just like to bring out quickly. Of course, we discussed the fact that the people have had problems with the seams of the bags in the past, and they've also had problems with the ties around the top. We discussed that, you know, maybe we should go with kind of an ear flap sort of bag, not have the ties in there. The representative pointed out to us correctly that that really doesn't work because people try to just cram more trash in the bag, and that the drawstring closure actually helps the bags not get overfilled. I brought up the point of the mill, the thickness of the bag, and was told that the thickness of the bag is comparable or the same, and maybe even thicker than the typical trash bag that you would get at the grocery store. So, again, we come back to the seams. It appears that a piece of equipment has been replaced that was causing some of the issues with the seams not being made correctly, and also that the drawstring has been improved. I notice now, when I pay attention, that my drawstring is now white. It's not yellow anymore, and I think that might be part of it. As a quick aside, I was out walking the dog yesterday, and I saw one of my neighbors who had his, today's trash day here in the neighborhood where I live, but he had his two orange trash bags hanging by the drawstrings from the metal railing of his back stairs. There's just his way of getting it ready to put out. But he was hanging them by the drawstrings. Now, of course, that's not recommended, but I think that's just an example that the drawstrings have been improved, and hopefully we won't have continuing problems with that. Bottom line in all this is that, yes, we've had problems with bags in the past. Waste Zero has been responsive to our concerns, and the term that I like to use is nobody bats a thousand. So they've had production problems, and again, I think those production problems have been addressed. And overall, nothing's going to be perfect. They may still have a bad run, but all in all, things have been improved with regards to the bags. And my last point is, if you get a bad bag or a bad sleeve from the grocery store, please call the Department of Public Works. That information is, I believe, on the bag or on the box that the bags come in, but of course, you can get that information off our website. Give them a call. They have been, and they will continue to track bag problems. And what they will do is, if you get a bad production run, they will immediately contact Waste Zero. Could be a recall will help out in that matter. They can also look back into production, figure out what went wrong. So, it's good data collection for us so this doesn't happen again. But also, DPW will replace your bags. If you, you know, I realize not everybody's going to want to run down to the office there. Call them up and just hang on to the bag, and when you feel it's safe, go down and get your bag replaced. You can go down, they'll replace either a single bag, or they'll replace a whole sleeve of bags if that's what it takes, they have extras there. So, again, that's the majority of my report because that was the majority of what we discussed. We also very quickly at the end discussed fees for residential solid waste, and we decided that that list of fees needed a little bit more tweaking, and so that's being reviewed again by the administrative people, and will be back in front of us next Tuesday to discuss, and hopefully then bring on to the full city council.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. I see a couple of hands up. Counselor Tuttle, your hand was up and then came down. Did you have something that you wanted to ask before I go on to the next counselor?
No, I'm also at the bar. I've answered my question.
Ah, that's good. Counselor Lanigan, I see your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for Counselor Stackpole or anyone on the committee. Has the company talked about the weight that goes into the bags? Are they designed to not hold too much weight? Could that possibly be a problem too, when we do overstuff them? I mean, I'm probably guilty myself of it, that causes, like, they're built that way? Has there ever been any mention of that? And then my second question is, are we reconsidering the bag height price? Because I noticed the other, last week, cardboard prices are going back up and it's more in demand, so I just don't know if we were considering anything there.
The answer to your first question is, I think the weight limit is printed right on the bag. So, yes, there is a weight limit, and, you know, how flexible, no pun intended, that is. If it's 30 pounds and you go to 35, you know, who knows? No one's going to put these on their bathroom scale to weigh them before they bring them out, but, you know, you get the general idea. So there is a weight limit people need to pay attention to. In regard to your second question, we haven't revisited prices yet since, I think, the last time we met and discussed this. But of course, that's going to come to the full council, so I'm not sure if it'll be run by us again in solid waste, or whether when that's, finally, I guess City Manager Buck might have to answer that, or whether that will just go straight to the council. But at this point, well, I guess I'll let City Manager Buck say. I was going to say, I don't really see us reviewing that, but if things change, of course, we're going to make adjustments. So let me ask Steve to follow up on that.
As noted, Counselor Lanigan, you're absolutely right. There's a favorable anticipated response on not only cardboard, but also mixed paper. And so that's part of our calculations this year. So you will see that when the sleeve price change is brought forward, part of that analysis looked at the Ecomane contract that was authorized at the last meeting was at $95 a ton, less the 80% of net revenue gleaned. The prior contract was at $65 a ton with a 50% net revenue gleaned. So the new recyclable contract at $95 a ton is actually viewed as going to net us out at $75 a ton because of the favorable response in the market for cardboard and mixed paper.
Okay, does that answer your question, Counselor Lanigan? Okay, thank you. Counselor Hanselman, do you have a naming committee update?
Sure, I'd be happy to share that at last night's school committee meeting, the school committee did use the data that the naming committee had passed forward to them, and we didn't actually make a recommendation for a name itself, but really passed forward the data that we collected from the community to them, and so they had the tough job of making that choice, and they are moving forward and voted all in favor of Stanford Pride Elementary as being the new name of the elementary school that will open up this coming fall.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Counselor Hanselman? Okay, I don't see any hands up, so I will just continue with the Subcommittee Reports. Municipal Operations, Public Works Director Matt Hill provided an update on the Fleet Management and Vehicle Replacement Program. And I will be honest that for me, that was pretty much of a, I had, that was not something that I had, we had in place when I was on the council many years ago, and I think for Counselor Martell too, it was really informational. Much of the discussion centered around snow removal on sidewalks and why the city has had difficulty keeping up with the snow removal. And then the answer is that the newest sidewalk tractor is out of service more often than not, and two older 2005 models have had their own problems and kind of seen their day. So, the department is going to first put in a Maine Lemon Law claim on the tractor that is less than a year old, and going forward, they're hoping to use 2022 CIP funds to purchase three new sidewalk vehicles, all the same make and model, with interchangeable parts and attachments. Hopefully, ones that will be durable and be able to make it through the tough storms that we've seen to be having, and they are currently reviewing any and all possible options for the best product that will meet the needs of the city and do a better job clearing the sidewalks after a storm. A new vacuum sweeper that's long been, I guess, in the sights for purchasing will be purchased with the majority of the cost being borne by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. Their contributions tied to the documented removal of phosphorus from the roadways to prevent it's being swept into waterways, where it can pollute lakes and streams. And our roads are in better condition now and can withstand the pressure of the new sweeper. It was my understanding that if we used the new sweeper on the old roads, the roads would have not been there when they were finished. Dot Morin from York County Community Action reported on a grant that they received to construct three bus shelters in the city. One is slated for the Nassau Health Center Transit Stop in Springvale, and they'd like to partner with the city in placement, installation, and upkeep of the shelters. The city manager will work with Ms. Morin and report back to the Subcommittee. I'm going to just continue on, and if anyone has a question at the end, then you can just, I will take all the questions at the end. The Public Safety Committee met, and the Sanford Superintendent of Schools, Matt Nelson, provided Subcommittee with a report on the process. He and the school committee will be utilizing, as they begin discussion, around increasing the number of days students are participating in in-person learning. Given that they will still need to comply with CDC guidelines, they gathered data from parents via a survey to determine actual numbers of interested students. The major stumbling blocks and challenges seem to center primarily around staffing and busing. I feel certain they discussed it last night, but I will confess that I missed last evening's meeting, so I don't know what happened, if they made any firm decisions, but I didn't really see a lot of discussion anywhere. So I'm assuming that the main item last night was, that people might have been really interested in, was the naming of a new school. So, if anybody knows anything about that and they want to update when I'm finished, that would be great. Officer Eric Small provided an update on outreach issues relating to our homeless population as well as efforts to address the connection with substance abuse disorders. And John Cross from New York County State Options Program, which is overdose prevention through intensive outreach, naloxone, and safety. It's a state program. John spent a day in Sanford with Officer Small discussing better ways to address our homeless issue and our substance use disorder issue, which are really connected. The most important takeaway from the day was that in order to really help people, we need to have more options available when an individual is ready to actually seek help. Chief Connolly and Deputy Chief Anderson discussed PD involvement with the new vaccine center, and they'll provide assistance with traffic and security if needed. YMCA Amazing Race Day will take place on April 19th. This will be a cooperative outreach effort between the City of Sanford, YMCA, and Maine DOT promoting pedestrian safety. We will have a council presentation with more information in the near future. Land Bank Authority, the Land Bank Authority was brought up to date on properties of concern, primarily 18 Winter Street. A notice of violation has gone out, and we will await the outcome. And Officer Small will be invited to attend the land bank meetings as an advisory member. And the Fire Station Feasibility Working Group met again and discussed the Port City Architecture Study from 2016. And our next meeting will discuss ways to engage the community in this process of how we're going forward with, how we go forward with our either new fire stations or at a bond issue maybe to purchase land. Any questions from anyone? Counselor Hanselman?
Madam Mayor, if I might just comment on last night's school committee meeting briefly. I do recommend for any folks that are interested in hearing some of the challenges and opportunities that we have as a community about getting our kids back to school, to watch the March 1st meeting, it is available. The easiest way I find is YouTube, WSSRTV's channel has it. And it just, you know, Mr. Superintendent Nelson really shared a lot of the challenges that exist, as well as numbers about, or data about kids that want to return, or families that want their kids to return. And I think you'll see that the school committee, you know, continues to have a lot of support for returning, getting our kiddos back to school. So it's a good conversation to check out, and I think the next steps is that the school committee intends- And I think the next steps is that the school committee intends to visit some of the school sites to get a better understanding of the limitations on the size of the classrooms and space that exists.
Thank you, Councillor, for that update. I appreciate it. Is there anything, any other comments or questions about our subcommittee reports? If not, then we will go on to the city manager's report. I almost skipped it, Steve. I apologize.
That's okay. Okay, starting off with the normal topic of COVID-19 vaccination updates. Continue to monitor the cumulative cases to date for the state in the three most active counties, being Cumberland, York, and Anderskoggin. You can see we finally dropped to a more favorable position of 428 cases per 10,000. So we're the low, low of the three most active counties out there.
Steve, that's Cumberland County.
You just circled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We're still the highest at 462.
Yeah. We've continued to waver on that point. My number was down, up, and then down again. So I'm sorry, I was grabbing the wrong number. So we'll see this later, and we'll look at the state graphs in there as how this plays out as far as what I'm still calling inequity as far as distribution of vaccines. We'll talk about that when we get down there further. Hospitalizations have decreased. I was recently in the board of directors' meetings. SMHC notes that there's been a significant reduction in the total number of patients either with the COVID-19 diagnoses and/or patients under investigations, PUIs, within their wards. As far as statewide hospitalizations, as of yesterday, there were 62 hospitalized statewide, 20 in ICU, 42 in non-ICU, and eight patients on ventilators. Testing's dropped, the PCR testing rate has dropped to a very favorable 1.35%. I say favorable in comparison to, it's been upwards of over 8% in months past. And then testing volume still remains high at 672 per 100,000. There's a listing of available, available medical resources. But please note that when it says 116 ICU beds out of 388, those beds that are occupied, only 42 of those statewide are occupied by COVID-19 diagnoses. The remainder are patients for other purposes in our hospital system. Previously, early on in the COVID outbreak, the hospitals were all but shut down for anything other than COVID activity. So the ICU beds were not occupied by anybody other than emergency situations and/or COVID patients. That's no longer the case. Outbreaks in York County, we've dropped down to, for the first time in quite a long time, less than 20 outbreaks. There's 19 in this list. I've simply highlighted the three Sanford locations, Sanford High School, Sanford Middle School, and Flemish Master Weavers. So I think there's only two businesses in this list, and all the rest of them are schools in varying communities within York County. Looking at the COVID-19 diagnoses for Sanford-Springvale residents by zip codes, year-to-date, there's been 1,263 of either Sanford or Springvale residents that have achieved the COVID-19 diagnoses, which represents 6% of our overall population year-to-date. And those numbers were effective, the last reporting was on 2/21/21. Looking at the statewide vaccination numbers, just under 17% of the state's population overall has received their first dose, and about 9% has received their second dose. So that represents 349,000-plus doses have been administered as first doses. You can see the propensity for the age 70 and older has gotten to the favorable position that it was thought to be at, in. It's going to allow for changes in the designation going forward. Looking at the 70 and older, the statewide number, there's approximately 191,000 persons that fall into this category. And 66.5% have received their first dose, and we're up to nearly 22% have received their second dose year-to-date. I put a note in here, if you use the 25% of the population as either declining or for whatever reason choosing not to obtain this, that would bring that age category up to 90%. I use the 25% because I see that never used a lot. When they talk about the average declination rate, approximately 25% of the population won't take it for whatever reason or have had great difficulty in doing that. So that would put us at about a 90%. York County stats overall, I can't filter down just on the age categories on that. I did talk to Dr. Shaw about that today when seeing him at the mega center today. He said, "Oh, we can do that at the state." I said, "Yes, sir, but we can't, we can't do that locally." So I've asked him to open that up so we can be able to drill that down here locally using the state's very well-kept tooling. But looking at York County overall, we've had 43,285 first doses overall. Just under 30,000 of those are first doses, and just under, just about 13,500 are second doses and are final. I'll make a note down here later when we talk about the Johnson &amp; Johnson. When they start rolling that out and we give a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination, that number's going to appear, it's going to appear only on the final dose. So when that rolls out, you're going to see the final dose number start to escalate rapidly because it's a one-shot and done. So they're going to categorize it as a final dose. But in York County, our overall population is at 14.35% total vaccination, nearly three points behind the state average number. And 6.5% of our population have had a second dose. And of course, the county's population is 207,000. Again, you can see the age distribution. This is just for York County. The significant numbers that are starting now in the 70 and older. But the true story, when you're looking statewide, the darker the blue, the higher the percentage of vaccination rates that have been achieved statewide. Cumberland is ahead of the curve on everybody, as is this mid-coast region and Arusta County. And York County continues to be a much lighter shade of blue, showing that we're in the low, actually the low as far as the percentage overall vaccinations. So again, as I've stated, York County is behind the state average vaccination rate. That's been noted for a number of weeks. And York County being one of the most active counties for COVID remains behind the state average for vaccinations. As of yesterday, the state achieved 17.21% vaccination rates, while we're at 14.7%. But given the advent of the new mega center, there should be just no justifiable reason that York County should not receive at least 17% based on population of the weekly allocation of vaccines. I remember adamantly that Dr. Shaw had stated in earlier press conferences that we put the vaccines where they can get into the arms of people. But that was an inference at that point in time that York County had not yet stood up a significant mega center as has been stood up as of today. So that piece should go away for us now. So we're looking for a greater percentage to be allocated here within York County because we have the capacity now to put those into people's arms. I also noted, that was able to glean, that Cumberland County is at 19.4% vaccinated. So they were one of the earliest to stand up, being the most active counties out there. And vaccines were being pushed there in a significant volume. The governor announced last Thursday or Friday, whichever of the 26 was, the governor announced that the age-based vaccination criteria would be used to prioritize the distribution of vaccines based upon those at highest risk for mortality should they contact COVID-19. So currently, we're under the age 70 and older. Starting tomorrow, that drops down to 60 and older. By the first week in April, eligibility should expand to age 50 and older. First of May, drops down to 40 and older. First of June, 30 and older, and by July and beyond, ages 29 and under, including children pending authorization of a vaccine for them from their primary care physician. Vaccination volumes, Maine is to receive 55,000 doses. Approximately 40,000 of those are comprised of Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. That's for this week. It's been notified, they applied for 11,500 doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, but we've been notified that we're actually going to receive 15,000 doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine this week. And that will start to be distributed out to those locations having fewer environmental controls. So for example, the mega center in Sanford, there's been a significant investment in there in environmental controls for the refrigeration, extensive alarm systems, monitoring systems that provide notification for any changes on that inventory. The inventory can be taken away and removed and put in other locations should it become necessary. The Johnson &amp; Johnson needs little to no refrigeration, is highly stable, and therefore it's easier to put out in those locations that do not have those kind of extensive facilities. We also received word today that the Hanford supermarkets will begin vaccinations across Maine later this week. They expect to receive an additional 3,500 doses. It's not part of the state allocation. It comes directly from the federal government. And these vaccines, vaccinations will be made by appointment only through their online schedule. And there's a link provided here, you know, hanford.com forward slash pharmacy, forward slash COVID-19-vaccine. So we don't have any further details beyond that, but that was announced in the press conference later, earlier this afternoon. And again, the arrival of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is a significant game changer as a vaccine can be administered, it is, can be administered really as a second dose. So again, Dr. Shaw has indicated that you will start seeing those second dose numbers escalate rapidly as the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine becomes more widely distributed. As far as the Sanford mega center, the vaccinations were stood up. Actually started there yesterday, although the press was relating that today was their first day. They actually operated there yesterday as a soft opening, but today was the grand opening. It is a partnership amongst Southern Maine Healthcare, York County EMA and IMT teams, as well as the Maine CDC. We were able to attend the press conference this morning. Dr. Narav Shaw, Director of the CDC, spoke. Mayor Mistrakio spoke there as well, as did Greg Zinza, the county manager, Richard Dutremble, county commissioner, and chairman of the board. Dr. Michael Schmitz from Southern Maine Healthcare. Dr. Schmitz has been instrumental on the incident management team. He's provided the medical consultation there, has put in a significant amount of time and effort towards the stand-up of the center. And they had two patients that had volunteered to be filmed, there's the old term, filmed, videoed, recorded as far as receiving their vaccinations there today. The ramp-up schedule that are received from the center itself, week one, they want to do 240 to 360 a day. They're ramping up and working staffing in as well as the amount of available vaccine as it arrives there for them. By weeks two and three, they want to do a minimum of 480 per day. By week four, 720 a day. By week five, 840 a day. And by the first of April, 960 per day. When the center reaches the full capacity, it's going to take 54 persons per day to run. Comprised of staff from Southern Maine Healthcare, Maine Health, York County Emergency Management Authority. Chief Benotti says they've worked out a rotating schedule with our own IMT paramedic staff that will be able to contribute five IMTs there to serve as vaccinators six days a week. University of New England is contributing staffing. Sanford Fire and EMS, as I mentioned, and other towns. When I say other towns, so this Friday, we'll have a conference with the York County managers. I have talked consistently with Director Art Cleaves, Director of the York County Emergency Management Authority, as well as Nate Howell, CEO of Southern Maine Healthcare. They continue to reference volunteers. So I take exception with that. Somebody needs to employ, quote, "the volunteers." It's a reimbursable expense by FEMA. They need to be employed so they're covered by appropriate insurances, workers' comp, and the like. So I will continue to push that issue. And what I'm trying to address with them is you can't stand up a mega center such as this and not know who's coming to work every day, what that staff is comprised of and looks like. So we'll, we'll work with them to see to it that that's not the case. I talked to you about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine and the significant changes that were made there. I was able to take some pictures. The councillors were invited last Friday. Sorry for the quality of this. The outside has the Maine Health COVID-19 Vaccination Clinic on there. It has the York County Emergency Management and the Maine CDC logos on there as well. You can see inside, it's a very expansive space, quite a large space when all of the petitions and store shelving has been removed. You can see the significant waiting area in here and the warm and well-lit welcoming center as you're coming in the front doors. Looking towards the back of the building, you can see the screens that are being set up to shield people as they're getting their shots so they have some privacy when that's taking place. Computer monitors everywhere to take care of all of the medical records that need to take place and reporting out to both the state and the federal government. Here's another picture of, you can see on the firewall, there's a row of computers against that wall. On the left-hand side of this picture is a row of computers. So you have intake on the right side of the building, outtake the left side of the building, waiting center in the middle. You get a Pfizer or Moderna shot, you have to wait 15 minutes and be observed during that period of time for any adverse reactions. If you get a Johnson &amp; Johnson, today's ruling is, there's no observation period for that. It's one shot, you're done. You can walk out the door, but they're still debating, debating that. They indicated earlier today, we had the grand opening there. There was opening remarks provided by Mayor Mistrakio as well as Dr. Shaw. Again, that stood up at the former Marshals Department Store in the Center for Shopping at 1364 Main Street. Here's our mayor, fully masked, giving her a speech this morning. Thank you very much for that. And Dr. Shaw, unmasked during his speech, and in his typical fashion, it just rolled, right? It just, the man remembers names, facts, figures. He has a, he has a very acute memory. So any questions on the vaccination rollout or any other questions on the COVID at this point in time?
Don't see any hands up. Steve?
Okay. All right, the next item I'd like to just touch, touch on quickly is cable TV franchise request. As previously reported, Comcast has filed a request with the city for a cable TV franchise, allowing them to construct a second cable TV network and thus provide additional internet service protocols to Sanford residents. Cable TV Franchise Committee held its first meeting, where reviewed the existing Atlantic Broadband franchise agreement, paired that to what has been initially offered by Comcast. Those documents were then sent to legal representation. So the city has obtained Ben Plant and Jeffrey Campiano from Drummond and Woodson, who specialize in this and have done a number of negotiations with Comcast. I worked with them last week, reviewed all of the legal documents and such. I have a series of comments from them. I'll get those typed up, put it in a memo form, push that out to the franchise committee. And then we can then set another date, I'm hoping, within the next week or so, to start the actual franchise negotiations. I will note that the legal council felt very favorable about what is initially put on the table. They've given us some good ideas as to where the city should be going with this as well. And of course, Comcast is looking for an expeditious process because they'd like to be building as soon as possible. And they anticipate to be, being able to build out their system in as few as 18 months. And the last item I have is the City Budget Committee. We have our first City Budget Committee meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM by Zoom. I've put the link here. Easiest way to find this link as well as all of the supporting documents, if you go to the city's website at sanfridmain.org/meetings. Or when you open up to the opening webpage on the, at sanfridmain.org, look to the right-hand side, click the calendar, and look on that, on the calendar and the first Budget Committee, the meeting that you see referenced on the Thursday. Simply click that link, it will open up. You'll be able to download any materials that are going to be presented that evening, the agenda and such. And you'll also contain all of the Zoom information that's in there as well. So the budget calendar looks like this. On March 4th, this coming Thursday, we'll have the organizational meeting. They'll elect the officers as well as receive the first review of the municipal budget. On March 11th, the school On March eleventh, the school department will present their budget. On March eighteenth, we'll bring those budgets back together, there'll be a joint public hearing on both the municipal and school department budgets. So that's done early in the process, so the committee can continue to consider a public input at that point in time. The next two, two meetings, March twenty-fifth and April first, those are actions to be determined. It depends on where the Budget Committee is at, what they're looking for, for other requests or actions at that, either of those two meetings. In pursuant to the calendar, by April sixth, the Budget Committee will present their recommendations to the City Council in a public hearing format for the council meeting that evening. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any councilors have any comments or questions? City manager? Don't see any. Okay. We will go on to communications and presentations, twenty-one dash five five dash zero one, presentation from Diane Gary, Director of Sanford Housing Authority and Eric Small, Community Outreach Coordinator, through the Sanford Police Department on an Envision Center being created in Sanford for community outreach aimed at preventing people from experiencing homelessness. So I will turn this over to Diane. Welcome.
Thanks. Thanks for having me tonight. I appreciate that. I'll just give a brief kind of present at the Envision Center and then I'll let Eric introduce himself and kind of what he does out in the community as well. So again, I'm Diane Gary, Director of the Housing Authority, as well as resident, proud resident of Sanford, Maine. And I'm going to give you a little bit of background of how this all kind of came to be. When I started at the Housing Authority a little over a year ago, I wanted to start connecting our housing resources to the other agencies in our community. So I asked those executive directors to start meeting biweekly. At that time, we started in February and then covid hit, so we had to kind of just do monthly Zoom meetings. But we really were working on trying to, trying to figure out how to do a coordinated strategic delivery of services to to people in need. Right now, it's a little fragmented and people have to go to so many different sites to get resources. So how can we make that here? So we started meeting with myself, the Director of Sanford Adult Ed Nicole Ivy, York County Community Actions Executive Director Barb Kreider, York County Shelter Programs Director Megan Gendron, Ryan House Director Sue Shane, the Director of Caring on Lusinji and Balvo, and the new Executive Director for Wabi and Jennifer Putnam. And in those conversations, we were just trying to really figure out how can we serve people best and not have people find all these gaps in services or have to run around to taxis. And then I got this email from HUD talking about this Envision Center. And I thought, aha, the answer presented itself. So I talked to this group of executive directors about partnering with it if I provide this and kind of the opportunities for people to work out of that center at Sunset Tower, would they be interested? And everybody was on board with it. So I talked to Steve Buck about it, who thought they could kind of get behind this as well because one of the, the things that we're trying to do is work on the homelessness issue and how do we do that? How do we provide these resources and where are people to really get the immediate resources that they need? And this is, as you can see from the handout, does. So Steve, can you scroll down a little bit? I want to talk about the four pillars. So if you look at the Envision Centers, how the services are delivered, there's four different ways. There's economic empowerment, educational advancement, health and wellness, and character and leadership development. So those are the four main things that we'd be working on with people who came to the centers. So for instance, if people are looking for economic sustainability, they can have budget counseling through York County Community Action, they can have rent classes through the Housing Authority, different things like that. So each pillar has an organization that would need in that resource. And then if you scroll down a little bit more, Steve, for me, please. The benefits for the community is that we work on breaking down barriers to poverty and homelessness, create more opportunities for pub training, for health fairs, for educational opportunities, and we are able to link our community to more federal resources to help provide opportunities to build more housing, to build, to look at workforce housing, which Steve talks about often, and then to coordinate with other, there's ninety-nine Envision Centers throughout the country, we would be the first one in Maine. So that's kind of neat, too. If you scroll down a little bit more for me. So now we're at the stage where how do we become an Envision Center? I had to get letters of support from those agencies that I talked about previously, and then it's, I'd like to have the support of the city going forward in this. So that's my very quick delivery of Envision Center idea. And then if Eric wants to introduce himself and his role in this, that would be great.
Everybody, Eric Small, Sanford Police Department. What I think about when I think of this is the fall of twenty nineteen, when we were having meetings early on, when we had people experiencing homelessness in Sanford, we had developed the Resource Hub in a tent at the York County Community Action Building. And I, I see this Envision Center being just a much larger version of that. And that was successful at the time, really helping us get people to resources. And currently, if I have people that are experiencing difficulties and need to get to resources, I will take and take somebody, you know, with me and bring the resource to them. And it's, it works, certainly, that type of outreach, but this is a great opportunity to have something right in our downtown area, in a conveniently located place. And all these organizations that Diane talked about have been really successful and, you know, really a team effort in our city, and we should be quite proud of that. So I just see this as a really great opportunity to also help people before they get to the point of homelessness, somebody that might be on the verge of that. And it's just a centralized location where that person can go and be directed and talk to somebody that can help them before they find themselves in a situation of homelessness, essentially. So that's all I have, really have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Diane, do you have anything to add to that? I just had a quick question about a timeline and when we might hear from HUD.
So once I get every, the whole packet together, I'm going to Friday, send it off to HUD. And it's a pretty quick turnaround because there's really no money that that we're waiting on. We can do this like right off the get go because I have the space and then staying it will be from all those agencies. So within probably four weeks, we'll have the, if we were accepted into the program.
Okay, I see that Counselor Lanigan has his hand up. Go ahead, Counselor Lanigan.
Just a quick question for Detective Smalls, and really just in relation to what's going on right now. It's super cold out. Is there, does the city have any resources for warming centers, like on nights like tonight and last night? I, I just can't imagine how cold it is.
Yes, certainly. Actually, that's what I focused on today. We don't have a warming center per se, but the first thing this morning, I was in contact with Megan Gendron at the York County Shelter, who had guaranteed me a place for somebody on a, on a cold night like for tonight. And we're just gonna, somebody needs to go up there, that's, that's where they're going to go. So they do have a place, the place to go. Today, I did go out and located all the people that I know that are living outside and tried to encourage them to, to go up to the shelter. And I wasn't successful in that, but I ensured, I made sure everybody had a warm meal today. Luckily, today was the, our food pantry through the York County Shelter Program, and we've been serving some hot meals. So I grabbed those and took those to the people individually. So definitely made sure everybody was taken care of today. But if, tonight, if I get a call from an officer or something like that, certainly we can get them up to the shelter.
Well, thank you, Officer Smalls. You're a huge asset to this community and I've worked with you over the years and thank you so much for what you do with my heart at rest a little bit there.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the nice thing about the Envision Center is that it can act as a warming center during the day, at least to start as well. And then a way that people can access, because there'll be a staff from the York County Shelter Programs right there to help do the intake application and get them with Eric's help to Alfred. So, and they can get a meal and all those things. It's a plus.
Are you all set, Counselor Lanigan? Counselor Tuttle, you have your hand up.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We talked about when we get the Envision Center locations, Diane, are we, where are we looking at?
We're looking at Sunset, right on Main Street. It's already set up. It's a huge community room, kitchen, office space, all those things.
I'd agree, that would make the most sense.
Thank you, so.
Yeah, that would make the most sense. Yep, thank you.
So Diane, we already put together a letter of support that I signed. Is that sufficient or did you need to have a vote of the council? Because we did not put this on as an agenda item, just as a presentation.
I don't necessarily need the council vote, but it would be a great thing to have.
Okay, so maybe what we can do is we can put this on as an agenda item before we finish this evening under new business and, and take a vote on it, okay?
That'd be great.
Would that be okay, Steve?
It will if you have unanimous support, yes.
All righty, yep, we'll have to see what happens then. Okay, and no other call, I see Officer Small has his hand up. Go ahead.
While I have you here, I would like to say thank you to everybody for really supporting this. It is huge. And also just to shout out to our citizens, I've gotten a lot of calls, especially today in the cold weather, and a lot of people came through with some gift cards for some individuals and clothing and things like that. So I just think our citizens should be recognized. I'm sure they, they don't want to be named, but they are out there and they're, they're making the calls and they're making the donations. And I've said it before, and you know, I can't do this by myself, really is people that we really don't even, you know, often don't know about. But I go to their houses and I pick up what they have and it's, I don't know, they should just be mentioned, so I just wanted to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Officer Small. Anything else with presentations? Then we will continue on and when we get to the point of new business, then we will add this item to the agenda. Just remind me, Steve, okay? I forget. Okay, we are on to public participation. If there's anybody who would like to talk about something that is not on the agenda this evening, either raise their hand, you can send a private message if you, if you don't have that capacity. I'm counting on Larissa if I miss somebody's hand up.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is Diane Conley, I'm a resident of Springville, may I speak?
You may. I also see another hand up, I think it's Christopher Haywood. So we'll do Diane Conley first and then Christopher Haywood second. So go ahead, Diane.
I just have two brief things. Late this afternoon, the President of the United States changed what I call the rollout of the vax, vaccine, and he asked for schools to be, and all the first responders or the first line people, teachers, so on and so forth, to be vaccinated, at least one vaccination by the end of March. I'm wondering if that changes the rollout from sixty to sixty-nine. I know a lot of things change very fast, but maybe the city manager didn't pick up on that late this afternoon. My other inquiry is something that Counselor Lanigan brought up, but on a different turn. I've seen a lot of posts about people that lost their power today, given the weather. And is there a option for homeowners to have a warming center during outages like this with today's weather? And it, going forward, is that something that's being looked at or is going to change, given Wells opening up a warming center this afternoon because of the power outages down there? Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I'm just, we usually don't address issues that are brought up under public comments, but I know the city manager was taking notes, Diane, so we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Haywood.
You are on.
Yes, you are.
Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted, Christopher, go ahead.
I forget what I was going to say.
Want me to give you a minute? Because we'll have to go on, otherwise.
Yeah, you can go on.
All right, if you think of it, you can always send us an email, Christopher, okay?
Okay, bye.
Bye, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the, under public hearings. The City Council will take public comment on the following, twenty-one dash five seven dash zero one, a public hearing to receive, oops, moved it, now I can't read it. Hold on. Public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Gaia Farms LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit C, Sanford, Maine. And I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Counselor Lanigan?
Sorry, I have a question, it's more point of order. Our, I, I thought on the renewals that we were just doing it through the consent agenda. Is that not happening anymore? Did we change that?
It will happen on the consent agenda, but there still has to be a public hearing, I think.
I, okay, I thought that we were bypassing that, but I, I, I'm not sure. I thought we set those rules last year, but I could be totally wrong.
You're right about the consent agenda, it's just the public hearing part. So you are right. This is new for, the consent agendas were new for me as well, Counselor Lanigan. I asked, you know, if this was, but I'm pretty sure that we have to have a public hearing because otherwise, if it was just on the consent agenda, the public wouldn't have an option to weigh in.
I get it, sort of like the, the alcohol licenses we do.
Exactly.
Okay, okay, I got it now. I'm on the same page, sorry.
All right. So is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda is the, is, next item is the consent agenda, twenty-one dash five eight dash zero one. And I'm gathering that I don't have to read this, I just have to ask if there are any objections. If not, the consent agenda, agenda is adopted as written. Old business, there is none. Under new business, before we continue, I'd like to, a motion to add an item to the agenda, which is support of the Envision Center being applied for by Diane Gary, Director of Housing Authority. Do I have a motion?
Tell move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle, I think there was a second by Counselor Lanigan. We will need a unanimous vote to add something to the agenda. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I am a yes, so that item will be added to the agenda. We will do it at the end of the agenda, agenda, under new business. Nineteen dash seven six zero dash zero one, order authorizing the expenditure of twenty-six thousand dollars from the Downtown Tax Increment Financing District Sinking Fund to match ninety-nine thousand dollars in grant funds requested from the Rural Business Development Grant Program administered to the main office of the United States Department of Agriculture if the grant is awarded to the city of Sanford. Do I have a motion?
Tell move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. I will turn this over to Ian Housier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, I think the best sheet, Steve, to talk about would be the one that says score, I see it on there. A couple down, that's right. We applied for this grant last year, we were not awarded it. We inadvertently put too low of a match as well. Um, we um inadvertently put too low of a match as well. Um, and so we're upping it to above twenty-five percent. And this is the second time we've applied for this grant since nineteen eighty-nine. And um uh some of the grant applications score higher. Um, so this will be another try at this as well. Um, the grant um would be used for um uh facade improvements uh and uh working capital and uh it it um tenant outfit. Um, and um it would be just a hundred, well, it'd be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the city of Sanford is uh lacking in um in in effectively gap financing. Um, it doesn't have any capitalized accounts uh for business development while other municipalities do. Um, so this came out of some of the efforts uh to to build that that those capitalized accounts uh from the downtown committee, so this came out of the this downtown committee that was uh that we worked through uh these items at a staff level, so trying to build some of our capitalized accounts and specific, to be able to be used specifically in the downtown. I'll be glad to answer any questions about this. Um, it's another go, it's a um a rural development um program uh under the US Department of Agriculture, and um it's pretty straightforward. Um, and we'll see if we uh maybe get it this year. Yes, go ahead.
So, just to be clear, this is a um is this a loan fund so that we could, or is it a grant fund from the city? So we would loan small businesses, say, on Main Street if they needed five or ten thousand dollars to do something to their facade or to, you know, something that might be required? Or can you just explain what the money um is, how the money would be utilized?
Yeah, it would be a loan fund. Um, there's a desire I uh from US Department of Agriculture to potentially match that with some um um, effectively it's gap financing, we'll put it up, put it that way. So it's uh, you know, uh this is can be used for tenant outfit, say you needed potentially an elevator, or you wanted to improve your facade, um but didn't have enough of the normal financing vehicles to do that. You'd need those as well, uh but this would be effectively just uh helping you with that that uh that ninetieth yard to get you to the finish line.
And that would help primarily primarily the small types of businesses that we have or would hope to have on our Main Street in downtown.
That's right, Main St- Main Street type businesses, small businesses, any anything, uh any of the kinds of businesses that you have currently on on Main Street.
Thank you, I see Counselor Hanselman's hand up, and I have from Martel's hand up as well, so we'll do Counselor Hanselman first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so I have two quick questions. One, just for clarification, but it looks like the focus is on the downtown area, but is it limited to just the downtown district, I'll call it, or could it ex, you know, exceed the, what we define as the downtown, um but the other mainstream businesses, so.
There's a balance with the grant, um in the application there. I I know that the grant says downtown and Mill Yard, so it could potentially be in that area as well.
And then my second and last question was just, are are we seeing a draft of the or the prior original grant application here? It looks like it's a little bit out of date in some of what I was looking at earlier.
That's the prior. Um, the 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 item before you tonight is the authorization of the funds, um if we're awarded it.
Thank you.
Counselor Martel?
Um, yes, thank you. I had some questions around, are there some current requests if this is uh approved? Um, what what sorts of things do we, or do we have any, anyone currently asking for funding right now?
It's a bit of a chicken and egg um uh problem there, um but I think halfway down you see the letters of the support, letters of support, um there are listed on there, you know, four letters of support. There's, there will be five that says that they'd be interested in using the funds um if we're awarded them.
Okay, and you you said that this is sort of a loan fund, um and the city is providing some seed money, um is this sort of something that will kind of grow by itself, or is this something that's expected to uh require more more seed money later on?
It's definitely gonna require more seed money. Um, I I, you know, I, Sanford has uh a couple um outside funds, uh like their Oscar Emery, um there's a new fund started up in the Springville area. You have some cemetery funds as well. Uh, but as far as uh business development and and economic base funds, um Sanford really has none. Um, so this is really just just a start, this is just a seed. Um, uh some other places throughout the state um have have sizable um business investment funds to focus on the downtown, the idea of bringing that, uh the idea of bringing, the idea being to bring people to the downtown, um and then also some business development funds. So usually it's a um that this gap financing is a necessary piece of uh of 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 building your your available funds that you can offer for business development.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman, do you have your hand up again?
I do, I'm sorry, uh, but.
That's okay.
I just wanted to share feedback um as part of this process. Uh, my husband, who owns a small business downtown, received a call this past week, I think, um in regards to whether or not he would support an effort like this. And I just want to share, and my husband's very smart, he's an amazing thinker, but he was a little bit confused by the message, you know, I think it was something about would you support gap financing? And so he immediately, of course, said, Anne, this is your arena. Uh, you you returned the call, and so, you know, I chatted with him about what gap financing is, but I just want to share that for small business owners, we're really awesome at what they do, whatever that might be. It could be making uh, you know, donuts or uh bouquet of flowers, or whatever it might be in their small businesses. Gap financing is a really foreign concept to them, um and so if we want to get support, somebody who maybe sees them in person versus a message, whereas more um ex- explains a little bit more what they're looking for and what they're talking about would be helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Hanselman. Um, Counselor Stackpole has his hand up.
Yeah, I I just wanted to point out, and Ian, correct me if I didn't hear you correctly, but the the matching funds are coming from a TIF fund, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, I just want to um ease any concerns that this is um uh this is somehow gonna impact taxpayers per se. This is not something that's coming, let's say, out of our general purpose budget. Uh, it's coming out of uh TIF funds, so when you talk about we're gonna need more, presumably you're speaking about more TIF money, again, not affecting uh funds for the general budget.
That's right, too. Uh, I'm saying in the long run, you're gonna need to build your your accounts as far as uh, you know, ju- just like you carry a fund balance on your budget, you want to have funds available for the purpose of economic development as well. Um, you you've currently got zero, it's it's somewhere more than zero that you should you should have.
Right, and and I guess my final comment is that this is, this is a kind of totally appropriate use of of TIF dollars. I mean, this is uh fits in with exactly what the TIFs are supposed to be doing for the community.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Um, Deputy Mayor Hurley has her hand up.
I just wanted to make a quick comment that this is an extremely common uh tool within a downtown communities network. To have something like that, it helps improve the facade in the downtown, as in trying to get the downtown to look more appealing to those people who want to stop and walk around and visit. So this is extremely common, it's great that we're trying to put one in place. I think it'll be very helpful.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
Yep, if I could, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, again, I I want to emphasize, as as Counselor Stack- Stackpole stated, this uh the twenty-five thousand dollar match that's being requested will come from the downtown sinking fund. That was segregated off, uh the last time we made the application, we were not successful in that that application, so the funds are still there. Uh, and it is absolutely an allowable use for those funds coming out of that tax increment financing district. Uh, and as Ian was indicated, I would recommend, so this is a revolving loan fund, right? So it'll go out to small businesses, uh as the loan funds are paid back, it comes back into your ability to lend that out for a second, a third, a fourth time, but it it you obviously can see the cash flow basis, if it's out there on a five or a ten-year note, you're not gonna see, you know, the majority of that back for quite a number of years. So if we could get ourselves into a cycle of using a portion of the tax increment financing on an annual basis to put towards leverage funding such as this, you start to build up that portfolio of gap financing in very targeted areas within our community. Thank you.
Anything else from any other counselors? And I'd just add that the subcommittee um passed this on with its its approval. Um, I just thought, uh uh I think it's 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 another tool for economic development in our downtown, so I hope everyone will support it. I'm gonna call the rule if there's no further discussion. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so that is. Okay, twenty-one dash nine five dash zero one. Resolve to issue a letter of support for the main sports resort project to be built in the city of Sanford. Um, I'll just say that we had a a letter of request from uh Mo Kilay and Dean Drinkwater, who are still proceeding with a with a um a revised um sports resort down in the area um where the York County Pine, the York Pines um original resort was thought to be, I'm gonna let the deputy mayor, um, I think you might have a little bit more detail than I do at this moment, but um they have a website up and they're trying to attract investors right now. And um all they would like is a letter of support from the city that to um put on their website as as a sign that um this the city's interested in in this method, this um sports resort. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes, I uh I've talked with Mo as a friend, so I've talked with Mo extensively about this project, and yes, as soon as COVID hit, um where they had made a huge amount of gain in looking for investors and they had great document, great paperwork to give to people and a lot of interest. Uh, the numbers looked great, the location, the concept was very well uh received by the people they were looking at for investment, and then COVID happened. And of course, nobody goes to conferences anymore, so and to rebuild that particular market of the economy, I think, is going to be several years in the making, but they wanted to continue to pursue um opportunity to have um something get started, even if it's not a conference center right away. So they're working on, I I've actually saw plans of the hotel that was gonna be there, the conference center. I mean, they had, they were that deep, they were getting that far into it, and they were doing really well with um uh the people they were talking to. So now that they've scaled it back a bit in order to get started on a portion of it and and working on the investors still, because they believe this part of the economy will come back more quickly than conferences. So they've asked for our letter of support, they think it'd be helpful um with the investors to know that the community supports this um this effort of theirs. They've asked for both Anne Marie and I to sign a letter of support, but we thought it was appropriate to get the council's um support as well through a vote to make.
Counselor Lanigan, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, uh Mayor. Um, I, my only question is, is I I'm totally in support, this is awesome stuff, right? Um, but is our planning board in support of it too? Like, is this something that's like totally feasible there, and they they won't run into any, you know, snags? And it'd be a nice, easy project for them?
I will answer, I I talked to Mo, I think they're all set with that in that regard, because most of what they're looking at now is just, instead of going for actual real buildings there, it's more like ATV trails and pavilions and the kind of um thing that that people seem to because of of COVID, and what's happened is there's been an increased interest in the kind of outdoor activities that um aren't as available uh for as many people, and so that there's actually a real opportunity here for them. I think that they um it would be, if they're not saying that eventually it wouldn't be a resort and conference center, but truthfully, right now, there are not a lot of people that are gonna have conferences.
No, but what I'm saying, I I just, sorry, Madam Mayor, um I just wanted to make sure that we're not supporting something that like, they go through the zoning process, or they go through that, that they're gonna run into those stumbling blocks, and uh.
No, I think they're in the investment phase, Luke. I think that they honestly need to have, they're just trying to get everything together so that, and trying to get people to spend some money.
And and I'm gonna support Counselor Lanigan's comments, though, because, you know, obviously, we do run up against that bumper, and and my belief is, you know, if it meets the um traffic rules, if it, if they get all their um environmentals in, uh if they, you know, all the ducks are in a row, it's, I would hope that our planning board um would just follow the rules that are set in place by the city council, um and make sure those rules are adhered to by the city, by the state, and they shouldn't be able to get in there with little or no issue. So, I I don't, I I think I believe what Counselor Lanigan is saying, and that has been a concern of the city councils in the past, and we want to make sure that when we're supporting something um that we're not, they're not hitting road, unnecessary roadblocks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Hanselman?
I'm missing Counselor Hanselman tonight, because I feel like he was good at correcting us. Are we out of order having discussion without any motion being made?
Oh, I'm sorry, did we not have a motion? Oh, we didn't have a motion to discuss, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve, was that by whom?
For, I can do that, it's on the table.
All right, thank you, Counselor, um Lanigan was the second. Thank you. Um, anyone else to discuss? Uh, Steve, do you have anything to add?
Uh, zoning is a yes on this, it's been examined a number of times. Uh, the city's engaged with VHB and and the main Department of Transportation, VHB being engineering firm, uh for proposed intersection redesigns, the intersection of ninety-nine and one oh nine, to accommodate the type of flow and activity level that would be at this type of facilities. We've we've, we have that in place, uh and that's all been very favorable as well. And there's been a number of environmental studies on this particular piece of property that I'm showing on the screen there currently for the layout, such as the vernal pools and the wetlands and such. Thus, the configuration as to why things are configured and laid out the way they are on this this schematic.
Thank you. Does that answer everybody's questions? Okay, do I have a, um, was that a motion to discuss, we had, or a motion to approve?
Now, this is gonna be a long discussion, I don't waste motions to discuss.
Oh, okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second. Counselor Martel?
I actually had a question, I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, we can, we can vote, yeah.
Um, have we, have we gone over any financials around this facility and and what the sort of plan is around that? Has that been discussed at all?
There really are, I mean, they've discussed it in in detail, but I had city manager, not us.
Yeah, uh Economic Development Director Nyman has has done a number of stacking analysis on this. Uh, one of the key factors here is city of Sanford through the end of this year, uh is the only municipality that can extend pine tree zone credits, tax credits to this type of tourism uh destination, so we are the only community that can do that. Uh, I mean, we've we've gone so far in all of these developments, we've uh, when Governor LaPage was in, we've had the governor here, we've had all of his staff here, and Director Nyman has worked with the new staff in under under Governor Mills to do all of the same, so uh it's been, it's been gone through extensively.
Okay, and this looks to be favorable.
I, you know.
It is, they, they did a secondary study, um Eric Lund performed that study for them, one of the best in the industries, most well-known, uh it was a study that was necessary to attract investors. So they've gone down all of those roads, they've got all of the pieces in place, they had everything going. They were batting the thousand right up until COVID hit. And so now they're shifting their, shifting their, uh it's it's when we reviewed these facilities in Wisconsin, Wisconsin Dells, you know, it's all about the suits, the various, I say suits, it can be anything from business suits to swimsuits to baseball uniforms, uh you name it, they all use different suits to fill the suites, to fill the complex, to bring the people in. We we actually observed one of these, uh the um it's been so long now, I can't remember the name, but there was a complex that did exactly this out there. They had uh no less than ten people, uh they had an ESPN contract, they had no less than ten people that just bought Uh they had an ESPN contract, they had no less than ten people that just booked the various sporting events that were being hosted on a co- uh continual basis at that particular. Uh you you talk about a complex that could put Sanford on the map, this would bring in uh good, clean, family entertainment, uh introduce families to our community. I know when I travel around the state, uh Sanford is extremely well known for the Columbus State Soccer Tournament. It's put Sanford on the map. This could could do that in in spades, so.
Okay, and you know, I, one of my concerns with some of these sorts of places, and I'm not sure how founded it is or not, but they tend to be sort of all inclusive and everything sort of stays right there. Um and they pull, you know, there's there's resources from the city that that need to be used to sort of uh support that in that location. I just want to make sure that that kind of thing's being looked at and and it's not going to cause an extra burden to the city just to have it there.
That that has been examined, thus thus the road improvements have to be borne by uh the cost of developing the project itself. Water's available there, sewer's available there, both of those capacities have been looked at, it's there. Uh this isn't going to add students in the classroom. Now, families may move here and occupy homes and such, but this particular project doesn't come with students in classrooms, things of that nature that tend to be burdensome upon the tax base. Uh there should be a net importer of wealth uh into the community.
All right, thank you, appreciate the the feedback.
Yeah, one of the things that I've been most impressed with with this, um especially the reworking, is that it's something that would not only attract people from outside of our community, but in our community, who would want to use it, especially with what we've been through in the past year. Um so we will continue with the vote unless there's no more discussion. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counsel Tuttle?
Yes.
Counsel Stackpole?
Yes.
Counsel Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, so we will get that letter of support sent so that they can post it on their website. Um Larissa, did you have a suggested um number for our new item that we put on the agenda or a?
So I'm
It's typically something that Granicus generates that order number for us, once we input it into the software program, so.
Okay, so I don't need to have a number?
No.
Okay, so I will, I'm looking for a motion to um support the application from Diane Gary, the Director of Sanford Housing Authority, for a an envisioned center in Sanford.
Oh, Madam Mayor.
So that was a motion by Counselor Tuttle, is there a second by Counselor Lanigan?
I'll second that.
All righty. So we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? I will call the roll, Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counsel Hanselman?
Yes.
Counsel Tuttle?
Yes.
Counsel Stackpole?
Yes.
Counsel Lanigan?
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is unanimous. So that brings us to council member comments. I will start with Counselor Martel, do you have anything this evening?
No, thank you, I don't have anything to add.
Counsel Hanselman?
A a couple of things, one, I just want to say that I'm really enjoying the subcommittee um really detailed uh reports that we're getting at our council meetings now. I I think they're great and help bring, uh you know, engage people that don't make the subcommittee meetings, but make our our council meetings, so thank you for that. And then a couple announcements, um or one announcement, I guess, Thursday, March eighteenth at ten AM, the Growth Council is doing a Zoom meeting on Sanford Net Fiber, and uh you can find more information about that event as well as the link on their Facebook page. And so on that, no kind of a a plug for both uh the Sanford Springville Chamber and the Sanford Growth Council. They have Facebook pages, they share great information for small businesses as well as just for citizens who maybe want to check out. Uh I think it's the Growth Council does a uh Restaurant of the Week post, and so there's great information about local businesses. So I just recommend people uh find those Facebook pages and check them out. And then the last thing is that uh York County Community Action recently posted uh opportunity for volunteers for uh drivers to vaccines. So if there's anybody that's trying to help out in the community and wants to be a driver for folks that can't drive themselves to their vaccine, there's an opportunity there. You can find them on uh Facebook or just call their office line. That's it.
Thank you, Counsel Hanselman. Counselor Tuttle?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I uh, having attended the opening of the clinic today as you did and others, I really, I had talked to Stephen last Friday and I said, we've really done our duty here. I was very pleased that uh the work we've done and uh I I think that uh history will show that it was the right thing to do. And uh I'm reminded of a quote from scripture that says that we have fought a good fight, we have begun the race, and we have kept the faith, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Tuttle. Counsel Stackpole?
Uh yeah, just a a quick aside, uh a a story that I'll that I'll pass along. Um people may not know, my wife's a few years older than me, so she's in the uh seventy plus uh age group to get uh vaccination uh where I'm in the sixty to sixty nine. So I haven't been able to schedule uh or have something scheduled yet. Uh of course, that starts tomorrow. But anyways, uh my wife also went and had a shingle shot uh and she got that at a local pharmacy. And uh probably about two days after that, she got a call uh to schedule her COVID nineteen shot. And uh so she was all excited, she was going to get her first COVID nineteen shot. Uh and then was asked, have you had any other vaccinations recently? She said, yes, she'd had a shingle shot. And they said, well, sorry, now you have to wait fourteen days uh in order uh for us to schedule your first COVID vaccine shot. All well and good, uh I'm just passing that information along to anybody out there who might be in a similar situation where uh there may be another uh vaccine. Uh they probably want to postpone that uh if they want to put the emphasis on their their COVID nineteen vaccine. Everything worked out fine, she got her shot on uh this past Saturday, they did call her back in two weeks and scheduled her. So everything worked out, she just had to wait an extra couple of weeks to to get her shot. So once again, if you're in that situation, you might want to avoid that other uh uh vaccine uh and keep yourself uh on uh tap, so to speak, or on top of getting your uh your COVID nineteen shot.
Thank you for that story, Counsel Stackpole, but I'm not so sure that your wife is going to be really happy hearing how old she is. So just saying
I just, I just said she was over seventy, so.
Okay, older than you were, those are the operative words, Counsel Stackpole, but thank you anyway. Um Counsel Lanigan?
She'll only know if you tell her, so.
Oh, really? Okay, Counsel Lanigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I just wanted to congratulate uh the hospital and and all the staff that put that uh COVID center together, that's pretty impressive uh spot. Um and uh I wanted to uh just give my wife, I don't normally do this, but I want to give my wife a shout out. She uh swore her oath to be a United States citizen last week. So that was a very proud moment in our house.
Thank you.
It's been a long journey and a lot of work, but it we're there and uh she's so happy. So I just congratulate her, she did it all her own and uh so proud of her, so. Um I just uh want to kind of mention this and and I don't know if it should be a future agenda item or or Madam Madam Mayor and Deputy Mayor, you guys discuss this, but maybe coming up with a goal where, you know, and we can always move this goal line, but maybe coming up with a a goal where we can all get back together. I think we do better when we're in front of each other. Um I I just, I I think we miss each other. Well, I know I miss you guys, so like doing meetings in person and stuff and and the school committee and they're doing it and um, you know, when that time is right, I just, maybe if we could set that goal, that would be nice. And I'm going to leave you with one other, one last thing. The more that you read, the more things you will know, the more that you learn, the more places you'll go. Dr. Seuss, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lanigan, and congratulations to your wife. Um Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I I second that, congratulations to Kat, she did a great job, it's a proud moment. Um let's see, what was I going to say? Um so I just want to, really, I want to give a shout out to the um Sanford Housing Authority last week, they they gave some um, they had some clinics for their um residents who are over seventy. And Diane and I kept in communication, she kept in communication with Anne and Anne Marie and myself. And um for the extra shot she had at the end of the day, I was able to run around, do an assessment of my my own elderly residents and anybody who didn't have a date yet or who hadn't gotten their first shot, I was able to get vaccinated at the townhouse, which was great. Uh so they have their first shot, they've got their scheduled second shot. And you know, the visiting nurses was able to not waste any shots that day by um being able to sneak in a few extra people. Um I think that's, I I believe they do try to do that, they make sure to try to have some people ready at at the last moment in order to get some shots, but they do have to be age appropriate. Um so believe it or not, I think I have, except for two people who managed to get sick before their vaccine date, I think I've got everybody over seventy at the townhouse vaccinated. So I do think they're doing an exceptional job of getting people in as quickly as possible, and I'm so excited to see the COVID site up because I think it's going to go um that much faster in this area. And I do think we'll be meeting together soon. I know Mayor Mistracchio is fully vaccinated, John got his first shot, Counsel Stackpole is in the next round, and I'm in the round after that, I don't know, John, are you in there with me? I can't remember if you're fifty yet. But I know I'm in the next round and uh so I'm excited about that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I will just comment that as far as meeting in person, I don't see that happening in the very near future. I think it's not about us, it's about people coming to our meetings. And um truthfully, um until there's some degree of herd immunity, I'm just not comfortable um um having just, having our meetings go back to in person. So we will discuss it, we're discussing um a lot of different issues around that. Um but right now, um I think we actually have better attendance and better um uh um better input on Zoom meetings. And I'm just concerned, and I've and I've had a lot of contact with um older people who have um tuned in and want to keep, and I'm not saying that we would ever get rid of our Zoom meetings and the way that people are able to participate in this way. And I do look forward to getting back together, but I'm going to wait until I'm sure that it's as safe for everybody. And to be frank, I find the school committee meeting that they're doing in person with very few attendees, if anyone, pretty um uh it's hard for me to hear them with their masks on. And it's um, it's not really um a cohesive meeting in the way that I think that we're appearing to be now on our Zoom meetings, um the way that we're doing them. So we have discussed it and and we will continue to have ongoing discussions with the City Manager um as as we go forward and as things, and I expect things to change. And I'll be honest with you, I'm hoping that within a few months that that, that we will be able to get back to meeting in person, but I don't see that happening in the next month or two. Um future agenda items?
Well, Madam Mayor, before we go on, I would I would agree with you. Uh we've always said safety first, Anne Marie. And we all want to get back together, but I think we uh you know, having uh been an old medic as long as I have, we we have to put safety first and we've done a very good job, so I think that we need to do that in the future.
All right, Counsel Tuttle, um I see that Counsel Lanigan has his hand up, but I honestly don't want to have this be a discussion, this is Counsel
No, if you, future, future agenda items, I I appreciate everything, everything that was said.
All right, I will just going to go through the list, Counsel Lanigan. Counselor Martel, do you have any future agenda items?
Uh I do not.
Counsel Hanselman?
Uh thank you, just just one, and I mentioned this before, and I I just want to follow up and also make sure I'm clear that I'm offering my uh time and energy to work on this, but I really want to see us whether it's at public safety or another subcommittee level or at the full council level, have continued discussions about bringing in some kind of facilitator or uh consultant to assist us with uh implicit uh bias issues and and uh, you know, I just don't want to lose track of that conversation and make sure it's something that uh we continue to think about and and work with. And I am happy to put some time into that, if it's helping put together some consultants or whatever it might be. And again, I'm not sure where we discuss it, but I just don't want to lose track of it.
Thank you, Counsel Hanselman. Um Counsel Tuttle, you want, do you have anything for agenda items?
I'm all set, Madam Mayor.
Counsel Stackpole?
All set, thank you.
Counsel Lanigan?
Yes, um one for uh possibly the zoning while they're talking about the retail marijuana. Um just something that caught my attention when the Partners for Healthier May came in a few weeks ago and gave their presentation. And I know that we're looking at the the retail marijuana, uh possibly uh adult use coming in. Um so I I just don't know if there's some sort of partnership with the city or like a trifecta where we can actually use an opportunity to get out some marketing material, uh you know, um so we can kind of teach our youth how dangerous this this stuff is. It's just like alcohol, uh early introduction of alcohol to your your brain as a youth um and 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 cigarettes or anything like that. So I just didn't know if there's some way that we can do it and maybe um through that raise some money for for youth sports or, you know, some something. I just, I I'm not in that that um committee anymore, but I just wanted to kind of toss that out. And then for public safety, I've been getting a a lot of calls, I don't know if any other councilors have, but um about the police visiting uh businesses. And now uh two things with that is is with numbers going down, they they don't see it as necessary. Um and and uh the second part is, is we're having a ton of like overdoses and a lot of serious stuff going on in the city. And uh taking an officer out of commission to be able just to go in and walk around when I've even, I I I'm not sure that they're very even comfortable doing it. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but that the things that I'm hearing, that it's just, it's just kind of a weird situation for both the businesses, the patrons and the police, so. If we, I I don't know.
Thank you, Counsel Lanigan. Deputy Mayor Hurley, anything?
Um just
Is there agenda items?
Yes, I know, we were talking about the um, at our agenda meeting, we talked about the Memorial Day and Fourth of July. Um we're going to, obviously, that topic's going to have to come up at this point. We we felt we could try to delay it as long as possible, so in hopes that we could do something for Memorial Day, Fourth of July was a little more concerning. Um but I do think at least some committee should start the process of um discussing it and and seeing if it's going to be possible this year.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hurley. I have nothing um else to add, so I will declare us adjourned, and we have an executive session that you will have to click on to a different Zoom meeting to attend, so I will see you all in a few minutes.
Night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.